I'll be reading of May 13th, 2019 to order. If everyone could stand for the federal agents.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence. Thank you. The listing of matters are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. Please note, this meeting is being videotaped on the cable. First order of business is the reorganization of the school committee officers and these are voting issues, so I will take nomination for chairperson.
I'd like to nominate Mr. William Flynn for chairperson of the school committee for the upcoming year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, look at how fast that was.
Okay, do we have a nomination for a vice chair?
I'd like to nominate Donna Hume for a vice chair for the upcoming school committee year.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Nomination for clerk.
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Molly Smith for clerk for the school committee for the coming year.
No.
Oh, is that you?
Sue.
Oh, you. Yeah, yeah, sorry. You got yours because she's like, "I have to nominate?"
Well, they already split something, they can split this too.
Thank you.
I second that.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, subcommittee appointments, capital budget. Who's Jim?
Me.
Who's Jim? Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Personnel and negotiations, Mrs. Sullivan and myself.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Safe schools representative, Mrs. Smith?
And myself.
Mrs. Sullivan? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
I get confused here.
Donations and dedications. Mrs. Hume?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sick bank is myself.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Warrant budget subcommittee, Mrs. Smith, Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the annual appointment of Dr. Oakley to project Contemporary Conservators. Competitiveness, I can't even see.
There wouldn't be Contemporary Conservators.
The appointment of Dr. Oakley to serve as a member of the Board of Contemporary Competitiveness for the fall of 2019-2020 fiscal school year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
An annual appointment of the North River Collaborative Pursuit to Chapter 40, Section 4E as amended by Chapter 43 in the Acts of 2012, members of the Board of Directors of the North River Collaborative are to be appointed annually. Dr. Oakley. Nope, forgetting me. Dr. Oakley is appointed as the West Bridgewater Public Schools Representative on the Board of Directors of the North River Collaborative in accordance with the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 4E as amended by Chapter 43 in the Acts of 2012 for the 2019-2020 fiscal school year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Annual vote of appointments to Reed's Collaborative Pursuit to Chapter 40, Section 4E as amended by Chapter 43, Acts of 2012, members of the Board of Directors at Reed's Collaborative are to be appointed annually. Dr. Oakley is appointed to serve as the West Bridgewater Public Schools Representative on the Board of Reed's Collaborative in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40, 4E amended by Chapter 43, Acts of 2012 for the 2019-2020 fiscal year.
Move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Done, done. Now to the good stuff. We'd like to welcome Madeline Olivier to the meeting tonight. Thank you for coming, Madeline.
She came and it's like she had her last day of school today, she's still showing up.
That's impressive.
That's dedication.
Okay, approval of minutes from our April 8, 2019 school committee meeting.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Superintendent's update, Dr. Oakley.
You were just flying through this. Yeah, the only thing I have right now is just the academic and technology showcase, which I know some of you were able to attend and we got a really good crowd from the community to attend the showcase. We had things to show from pre-K all the way through 12 and many of you there, I mean, it went from robotics to learning your innovative ways to learn vowels and consonants for kindergarten kids, worms. There was pets in the classroom, virtual reality, and so much more, actually a lot in the TV media studio and the cast from Mamma Mia came and actually sang a medley from Mamma Mia, so that was cool. But really, it was, it was a great night, there was a great crowd all night and the kids and the teachers were excited to show off what they do in school and share it with the community, so I don't know if you have any comments about it, but I thought, I thought it was a really good night. So, it gets bigger over the year, which is nice.
I love the new format, I think it's so much more relaxed now and it's better for the kids so they can do their presentations and they kind of have their families around them and their friends and the classmates that come in to see them, so it's kind of an ongoing, I mean, the two hours or the hour and a half flew.
Yeah.
You know, by the time you start and then you go through the whole, you know, presentations all the way around, it's, it was great.
And there was some, I mean, we also, there was the National History Day finalists were there, some senior projects and I just thought it was a great look at our system from pre-K through well and see how it grows and changes, so, thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Oakley. Business, field trip approval, boys' basketball team to attend the KSA Events Holiday Basketball Tournament in Orlando, Florida, Mr. Antonio. Mr. Campania's here too, so don't jump right up here.
I needed a bodyguard.
Hi, we're just looking for approval to attend this basketball tournament, feel like it would be a great, you know, team bonding experience as well as some top-notch competition.
Okay. Do you have the details?
Flying?
When is it?
Busters?
Running, no. It's, um...
Your team's good, but I don't think they're that good.
The advantage of booking through KSA and they run several other tournaments, not just basketball, is they handle everything.
They handle everything.
So, the airfare, you can do on your own or you can choose to lock in the rate through them when you put your deposit, all the transportation down there is included, you have three days at Universal Studios with your team, one at SeaWorld, the meals in the morning and the evening are included, three games and a practice session when you first get down there.
What does KSA stand for? I'm sorry. It's a tough one.
Keeping students active. No, it doesn't, it doesn't stand for that.
That's pretty good, we'll take it. I would have thought that, that was very good.
That's, that's a great question. I don't...
Probably just the name of the company.
It is the, I've used, I've dealt with them in the past, they are a very well-run operation down in Florida, there's been different, we've done some field hockey stuff with them when I was in Pembroke, so it's a, it's a really well-run organization and everything's boom, 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 boom. I actually, I tried to match up their pricing too and their pricing's, if you go and book through a bunch of different sites and purchase your tickets, their pricing's actually very competitive.
Where will they actually be playing that tournament?
I don't know.
When is it?
It's December 26th through the 31st.
Oh, okay.
You leave the morning of the 26th and return sometime in the evening on the 31st.
Are they, you see they have both the Vasey and the JV, is there going to be stuff for the JV kids, are they going to have games too?
Yes, so that was one of the nice things because, you know, the group we have right now is pretty competitive across all three teams and they have stuff for junior varsity and then they have different tiers for the varsity, so you don't go in there and play, you know, top-tier school, they'll, you know, group you by size and past years' record and so on and so forth, so.
How many chaperones?
Just the coaches, for now, I mean, my family would be coming, we'd encourage and they do different family packages that, you know, wouldn't be part of our fundraising efforts, but they encourage the families and everybody to come, so, you know, it's not just the team, but if parents and siblings and everything want to travel with them, they have rates for them as well.
How many students, how many players can go?
All the pricing and estimates I did was on 20 players, 10 and 10 approximately, and then the two coaches.
So, they would be staying in the hotel, obviously?
Yep, yep, so they give you, they don't give you a specific hotel right now, but they have, you know, value or moderate hotels in that Orlando area.
Okay. Is there a requirement though for a number of kids per chaperone for trips out of state and all that for overnights?
Usually.
So, I think we'd have a chaperone?
Five or six.
Question? I mean, I'm personally not comfortable with 20 kids going with just two coaches. Because you're going to be with family too.
I don't think they should be comfortable with it either.
Well, to put a reference, we sent 124 down to Washington, we had six.
Six.
If there is a...
That's about 20 kids per?
That's a lot.
Yeah.
I think you can speak to like a lot of times, so the, you know, where the chaperones are, they're off, you know, doing things, there's the check-in times, wherever they're going, it wouldn't be free reign to just leave the hotel whenever they want to, they have very strict guidelines in terms of where they go, who they go with, throughout the whole thing.
So, based on those numbers, Coach Campania doesn't even need to go with three people? Well, this would be the first time.
We also talked about having a freshman coach as well.
Yes, there's a freshman coach. Right.
At least the third chaperone, and we could certainly, if chaperones are concerned, I think we could certainly address that with more chaperones.
Okay, that would, and then just what about like the weather cancellations and all of that?
Weather's definitely an issue with New England.
Obviously.
The day you travel on the 26th, you just have a practice session that evening, there's no games played on the 26th, so I think if you did have a weather delay, you might, might end up losing out on your practice session or that first initial day.
What about the flight though?
That's, that's what I'm saying, if it got bumped today...
There must be some type of insurance through KSA.
Insurance through KSA as far as weather-related travel.
So, on this, it has the approximate price, but the, the cost that you're looking for from the school is for the cost of three games.
Yeah, the, the approximate price, I've gone a little further with it since I filled that out, it's actually higher.
Okay.
It's about $41,510 and then if you estimate the cost of about three games, and I'd have to check with Ms. Hamel, that's a little over $1,500 bucks for three games, so that's all we'd be asking for from the athletic department is, you know, we're not going to have three games played up here, we're going to have three games down there, this is the normal cost, that amount would be contributed.
Okay. Was that in the athletic budget? Did she put that in?
If, I'm not sure, I can't speak her, but if not, then I think we would look at fundraisers separate from the ones they're running to supplement that cost.
Talk, the $41,000, is that what we're talking about or the normal?
The $1,500, the game costs?
That, that's a normal cost that they have for officials, for busing us to the games, score is stable, so I just estimated, you know, if you have, you know, a JV game and a varsity game, it's somewhere around $90 is the average per official, so those four officials is, that's a fee that she wouldn't have to pay if we're playing there.
That's in the budget already.
Because typically over school vacation?
Yeah, I'm sure it's in the budget, she has to schedule out, if they don't go, she's got to put those in the budget to play those teams.
So, when we go, we wouldn't be able to play.
Did they play the tournament last week or today?
So...
No, 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 what I'm saying is if they don't go, those, those fees still have to be paid if they stay here.
That's right.
Why, why? They didn't play game plus?
No, because they have a 20-game schedule, so they're going to play, well, 18 to 20-game schedules, they're playing 18 to 20 games regardless where the games are.
Right.
So, the, the budget is built for 18 to 20, whatever those...
Yeah, so now we'd have 17 games in Massachusetts and three games in Florida instead of 20 games in Massachusetts.
So, then on top of that, the students or the athletes have to pay for their time in Disney?
Unless you guys, no, I'm sure, yeah, we, we...
We save our budget. And then why, just saying. Right, we're scared about $1,500.
We, I've got some ideas for fundraising.
Okay.
And, you know, one main one, if we hit the goals, would take care of the fundraising for the trip, but there's other supplemental fundraisers that we could do, the goal is that it costs the players nothing, so that's, that's the idea.
So, the other question that I had though too is your fundraising's not going to really happen, you're not going to know who your players are though until October, November, right?
That's the biggest, that's the biggest, till after Thanksgiving and that's the biggest issue.
So, that's a time issue.
That we have in, in talking with KSA, it's an issue that all of the schools have because now you'd open this up to players that played, you know, varsity, JV freshmen or the incoming ninth graders that played middle school basketball, would all have an opportunity to fundraise with us, but there's no guarantee that they'd make the team. And so that's, to me, that's the biggest issue with this whole process.
Are there freshmen too that would go?
What's that?
Kids on the freshman team would go also?
You just, you don't know who's going to make what team at this point.
We don't know if we're going to have a freshman team again, don't forget it was just funded for this year by the boosters.
Boosters.
So, we might not have that freshman, oh, yes? Is that a budget? Yeah. Oh, it was, okay.
But, maybe a freshman made a JV team or varsity.
Or a varsity team, right. I mean, this past year, we had five freshmen on the JV team and two freshmen on the varsity team, so it's seven freshmen that went up.
So, just for clarification, our role would be to, if we approve the field trip because it's out of state, but the actual details of the field trip, like who's going, how they're doing the fundraising, that, that isn't our jurisdiction.
But usually you have those things, so I don't know if you want to...
Can we table it?
Ask him to...
Maybe.
Put a little bit more specifics together and then vote on it at the June meeting? With, you know, what your fundraising?
Have some specifics I could send to you, I just don't know what...
That would be awesome.
Which, which ones you're looking for, I mean, I started going through, you know, this, you'd have to have something in advance that you'd give to, you know, the player and say, hey, you need to take this home, go over with your parents and sign off that you're going to actively participate in fundraising, but there's a chance that you might not make the basketball team. And, you know...
Yeah, I think the school committee just wants to see that stuff and what types of fundraisers and chaperones and, oh, just, I know, usually when people come, they just have a more in-depth, more details.
But isn't our role to make sure that it's a safe environment, that it's a planned environment and then we have to approve it before they can get details from students if they're interested? Isn't this the first step? Like, just because we approved...
Not who's interested, just where you, you know, like, is it listed, like, I, I didn't get the form, I didn't see the form, so is it listed, like, where the, like, what hotel it is and all that stuff?
No, it's just listed that KSA is going to handle all that.
So, usually there's details like, okay, this is the itinerary one where they have the...
I, I have that if you want that, you want me to email it or?
If, if that, like, that would be great, the itinerary and then I'd like to know some more.
It's just, it's just a sample, it, it literally says like the travel day, you come down, you have a practice session, the next day you, you get your, your breakfast at the hotel, you have a day at the park, the games are in the evening, it's not specific to, you know, you'll be staying at the, you know, so-and-so Holiday Inn or whatever it is in Orlando.
I think they just want to see more.
Just more details.
Specifics from KSA.
You're not staying actually within the park, are you?
It says a Universal Studios Resort Hotel.
So, you could end up staying either at the Swan or the Dolphin?
That's Disney.
Huh?
That's Disney.
I think, I could work with, with, I think you're looking for in terms of just some more details, more specific information for the June meeting.
That would be best.
I think the timeline is important just to start with it.
Yep.
They need to have done that knowing that it's a potential opportunity with nothing definite to improve by school committee and to talk to the players just to get a feeling because if the feeling was, we don't want to do this, it's not what even happens.
That's it.
So, we can certainly provide more information.
Yeah, I think the things that we're concerned with most is like the, so that we have an opportunity to look into the, the KSA and their reputation and all sorts of things, but besides, just because the school committee approves a field trip doesn't mean it's actually going to happen either, I think that's something, you know, that...
They are just approving so they can go out of state.
Yeah, we're just saying, we believe this is worthwhile, quality group, say, yeah.
KSA is approved by the National Federation of High School Sports and the, and IAA approves the games that they host and you play against other sanctioned schools, whether they be in this tournament, it's specific to the US and Canada for the teams that you play from.
It sounds like a, a great opportunity, it really does. It just, like, just a little more specific, if we put it over till June, that's not going to impede you at all.
The whole reason I was trying to get on this agenda is to start the fundraising since it is, it's a lot of money.
Only three weeks.
Yeah, it's, it's not that big of a deal, but...
Because our meeting's June 3rd, our meeting's early in June.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
Yeah, because it's Tom meetings.
It's the last day.
Is there a minimum number of students, like, if, that you would need, like, if you...
A team.
Whatever reason, just to save time.
Yeah, a team. Um, I'd say, I mean, if you just took the varsity, then you'd probably be looking at probably 10 students to go. They do, in the bottom of this, they, they require eight rooms, be blocked and booked, so if you only had 10 players going, you'd have to, you know, book through other family members or something like that to hit the number of eight.
And when is that by? Does it give you a deadline?
So, they need full payment within before 60 days from your travel date, so that'd be October 26th, they need full payment by, they won't reserve any airfare or book any airfare till they have a deposit, the deposit's $400 per person, and he likes that, soon and then later. I've been peeking at the airfare and it, it fluctuates and we've been looking between Boston and Providence and, you know, today, the prices in Boston were less than we anticipated for this budget and it's like...
So, when you're giving them full payment, you're just giving them payment for like a certain number of heads, not people's names?
Spots. Correct.
So, they don't actually book plane fare until after Thanksgiving, until the kids?
They work with the airlines closely, he sent me an email on that because I had the same question.
Yeah.
And he said, "It's more important, the number of bodies that will be traveling and flying until you select your team and then they need all the normal travel information that you have."
We can insert their names after.
Logistically, it sounds very complicated when that goes as far, I mean, no, it's hard enough to choose teams on a normal season, but to do this, that part, I, that's a lot.
That's a lot.
Yeah, I do know, I do know typically if it's, like, I'm familiar with like club teams doing things like this, are there other public high schools that do this?
I know, he mentioned, you can put us in contests, but Silver Lake also does the event.
All right, good to know.
Do you have any feedback from them as far as how much they either enjoyed it or not?
Ms. Hamel was in contact with Silver, Silver Lake and their coach and they said they love it, it's a very well-run event, so we've been, I've been looking at this for years, it's just with the two weeks of break, it seems like a good year to, to do it.
That's true.
So, that's why the push.
Well, I guess based on the conversation we're having, maybe we should table this until he comes back with a little more info. I would never hold you to any names, but I guess a little more info on, you know, where you're staying and exactly what kind of fundraisers you may try and run is, is a, is a good point.
Yeah.
And whatever you already have, of course.
Yeah, the, the main fundraising event that we're looking to do is, is the raffle off a car fundraiser, we'd look to sell 800 tickets at $100 a ticket.
Yeah.
The anticipated value of the car or cost to us would be around $30,000.
Yeah.
We budget 2,450 for taxes, title and registration fees that you normally get through the dealer, there'd be several smaller prizes along the way and $5,000 would go to those supplementary If you, if you hit those numbers and you do that with the cost of purchasing the book of 800 tickets, some signage, things like that, you, you'd cover the cost of the trip with that one fundraiser if you can sell all 800 tickets.
They tried to do something similar to that, the baseball team last year, they were trying to raffle off...
Small dugouts.
For the dugouts?
That's right.
Did you talk to Mr. Outerbridge about...
Yeah, it was a little, little different with the, the prize value was less, but...
I'm just, the only thing I'm trying to say is that I think you might want to get the Gridiron and/or the boosters a little more involved with helping you to sell those tickets. I know that Coach Outerbridge did that, but he did it a little too, like, short-staffed.
Yeah.
And I think he's willingly amidst that.
The, the successful ones that I've seen, and I'm more familiar with York Main, the Rotary Club there, does it every year and, and they start, like, they actively start now and they raffle in October and they've been, you know, blasting the emails and everything, buy your ticket, so on and so forth, and then they set up, like, in June, they'll pull a name and it'll be a $500 prize.
Right.
And say, you win, your name goes back in, you're eligible, like, you could, the same person theoretically could win every single drawing.
Right.
But that's, that's the time issue, the more, the more time, the better. The idea is it would be nice to do that raffle at the first home game, make it, you know, a bit of a big event.
Sure.
I've talked to Quirk Chevrolet and Braintree about doing something, you know, it's hard because you, you need to pick a vehicle that appeals to a lot of people, there's a cash value option when they do that, so you could take a Silverado or, you know, 30 grand in cash, something like that. And they do put on the tickets, you know, say you only sell 400 tickets, the prize amount will be adjusted accordingly.
Okay. Any other questions? So, so, thank you for saying Tony, I guess we'll table, we'll see you in three weeks.
Appreciate your time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Budget overview. So, going to go pretty much just to the budget again as we've made our final recommendations, Dr. Oakley has sent the final copy off to the town and, you know, what we have.
This is the, this is the budget, the end of this, the last budget is what is going to be on the town meeting, annual town meeting as part of our budget that the Finance Committee and the Selectmen put forth for the annual town meeting, so as we discussed, we thought it would be good to get the information out there in a succinct finalized format similar to the presentations that you guys made to the Finance Committee and the Selectmen so that people that either come to this meeting or watch this meeting can... so that people that either come to this meeting or watch this meeting can be well-informed before the June third town meeting, which is, like, right around the corner, so.
All right, all right, so here we go. This is, so, obviously, the two areas of the budget that are significant strain are our special education and the English, English language learning. We're not alone in this. A lot of the other towns have a lot of the same problems. So these are the areas that are focused by the Foundation Budget Review Commission and the recommendations made to the legislature. So first up, we have Mrs. Hume with special education.
So we, as a district, are required to provide, in the least restrictive environment, a free and appropriate education for special ed students age three to twenty-two. Um, the legal document known as an Individualized Education Plan, or IEP, dictates the appropriate services and placements for each student, and that placement may not be in our local public school. As Mr. Flynn mentioned, the most unpredictable and unfunded costs for special ed are outside placements for students whose needs cannot be met within our district. We're responsible for both the cost of sending these students out of district as well as for the transportation costs associated to getting the students there. I say the costs are unpredictable. For example, last year, we had finalized our budget in June, and in August, a family moved into West Bridgewater and they had a child already in an out-of-district placement. We had to assume the tuition for that placement as well as the transportation costs, which were between seventy and ninety thousand dollars per year. Another example of how costs can be unpredictable, a student could be transported out of district and develop the need for a monitor or a one-on-one aide on the bus or the man or the taxi because the transportation company says they're afraid the student might become violent or hurt themselves. So that cost also falls on us. The student is our student even though they are getting their education out of district. A student might also require an aide or one-on-one in the classroom during the school year, which is another example of an unpredicted cost that we have to take on that we didn't budget for. Was it dancing this slide?
Hmm?
Put the other slide up. So presently, only one point five of our school population is placed in an out-of-district placement. However, this represents approximately one point seven million dollars, or eleven percent of the total proposed fiscal year twenty budget. Circuit Breaker funding, you might have heard this before, it's available from the state to supplement the local budget for tuition costs, but over the last several years, it's not been fully funded. So we do get some back, but it's not the complete amount. And transportation is not reimbursable under Circuit Breaker, and sometimes the transportation costs could be equal even more than the placement itself costs, depending if there's a need for a monitor or an aide. This next chart shows the anticipated out-of-district placement costs for fiscal year twenty based on what we have this year. The first column shows the number of students at that placement. We can't list the name of the placement next to the number due to confidentiality reasons, but the list of the schools the students attend are shown on the slide at the bottom. The next column shows the annual tuition per pupil, and remember, we have no control over what that tuition cost is. Then the chart also shows the annual transportation costs. If it says NA, that's because the transportation isn't needed or it's a residential placement. So, for example, we have five students at one school. The tuition per student is fifty thousand three hundred and five dollars, plus the sixty-two thousand dollars for transportation, so that totals three hundred and thirteen thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars per year. Another example to point out, we have a student with severe disabilities who is in a three hundred and sixty-five day-per-year residential placement with an annual cost of over three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. So the annual, the anticipated cost for these out-of-district placements for fiscal year twenty is over one point seven million dollars. And that's three hundred and twenty-one thousand four hundred and seventy-eight more than fiscal year nineteen. So that is two point five percent of our increase for next year. And the reason it's so much more this coming year is because of the move-in we had, a change in placement to a more restrictive environment, and we also had some changes in services for some of the kids and an increase in transportation. Also, each placement has increased its tuition, and one of those placements actually increased by seven percent this year. This graph shows the increase in sped services overall over the past seven years. So the blue shows the number of kids we service here, and the red shows the cost of the out-of-district placements, and the orange on the chart is for transportation. So you can see the increase is in the out-of-district and transportation because of the increased needs of the students. If you look at the blue, we're happy to say that the in-house services haven't gone up over the last few years. And the reason for that is that Mr. Michael Asic has been working on building capacity within the district to bring services in-house like OT, occupational therapy and behavioral, behavioral therapy, instead of relying on outside agencies for these services, which is more expensive. So it's really the tuition costs and transportation costs that are hurting us, and again, we have no control over these. We have no control if the tuition goes up or if the transportation goes up. And if we can't find another district that has a student going out of district to the same place as one of our kids, we have to pay for a hundred percent of those transportation costs. We have one student that we pay two hundred and ninety-nine dollars a day for transportation. That's the only transportation we could find, and by law, we have to get the student there, so we have no choice but to pay that. We do go out to bid every year for out-of-district sped transportation, and we always go with the lowest cost. Oftentimes, we can share transportation with another town, so we do have routes that we share with other districts. And we are also able to co-share through the North River Collaborative, which we've been doing for about eight years now, I think. So now, I'll turn it over to Jim, who's going to highlight the other area that has a big impact on our budget, our English language learners.
English language learners. As is the case with what Mrs. Hume just had to say, had to say, we also are required to make sure that our students who do not speak English fluently are learning it at, at the cost of the school department. And Massachusetts statute requires that all students non-fluent in English receive ESL, English as a Second Language, services by specially licensed teachers. The amount of service per student ranges from ninety to a hundred and thirty-five minutes per day for Level One and Two students, and forty-five minutes per day for Level Three and Four students. Level One and Two students are the students who have no English, if I'm correct.
Very, very...
No, like, no to very little English. Um, and the Three and Four students are those that have been in the program for several years. Levels are assigned through WIDA testing. Currently, eleven of our ELs, uh, English learners are in Levels One and Two, and eleven are in Levels Three and Four. There are also nineteen FELs, formal English learners, who are required to have quarterly monitoring and reports completed by licensed teachers. Now, the licensed teachers, you know, we, they go from school to school, and there's a lot involved with making sure that the students are, are getting the English and learning the English that is required so that they can eventually go to other classes where they're not somewhat a little bit, I'll use the word, betwixt about whether or not they understand exactly what their teacher is talking about. And it's difficult because the teachers who are trying to help these students also have to spend a little more time in making sure that they have somewhat of an idea of, you know, what's going on in that classroom. Several years ago, we hired a part-time ESL teacher, but due to the continued population growth in ELL students, the position was increased to a one point oh FTE. However, with the recent influx of, of several non-English speakers, an additional point five teacher must be added in FY twenty to be able to appropriately service all of the students across the four schools. In addition to providing English language instruction to ELs, many parents and guardians require an interpreter service, which the district must provide at the cost of two hundred and fifty to three hundred dollars per hour with a three-hour minimum. We do that, but we also have the availability of some of our teachers, and Dr. Oakley can correct me if I'm wrong, volunteering to help us out with that in the event a student wants to be involved with an after-school event and/or go to some sort of a play and make sure that they understand all that's going on. We have a situation where, you know, a teacher may volunteer or we reach out to someone who can help us in, in accompany that student so that they have a good understanding of what's going on. The chart that you are looking at now shows you where we've gone over the past four years with our, our ELLs in reference to our FELs. And, you know, back in two thousand and sixteen, our ELLs were minimal compared to our FELs. And now, in two thousand and nineteen, it's an even split. I have to ask, I thought we had one more student or two more that came in late that weren't part of this...
Right, right, just within the last...
This total amount.
Yeah.
And...
So there are two more.
Yeah, so there are two more. The languages include, and, you know, I, I got to be honest with you, I didn't realize that we were teaching, we had so many different speaking students here. Haitian, Creole, Arabic, Portuguese, Spanish I can understand, Mandarin, and Urdu? Is that, am I pronouncing that correct?
Yes, Urdu.
Which, don't even ask me what country that's from.
One of the languages in Pakistan.
But that's, you know, that is a very difficult area to keep up with. I, I hope that, you know, all of those that are watching this, this evening can understand what, as a group, along with Dr. Oakley, what we're up against in these costs and how we cannot control this. Moving on.
And that, you know, I think we all realize that being next to an urban center, these numbers are only going to go up, not go down. I'm actually surprised that they haven't gone up sooner than this in West Bridgewater, but they will continue to go up. So, you know, right now, we're going to add a point five. We'll be, we'll be adding more because we need to make sure that we service these kids to our fullest, fullest extent.
It benefits us to have these students, it benefits us to have these students get the services they need.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you, Mr. Holden. Mrs. Sullivan?
So as Mr. Holden and Mrs. Hume have explained about our unfunded mandates and where we're struggling, I am to explain how we're woefully underfunded, i.e., that's Chapter Seventy. Chapter Seventy funding is the aid that the state provides to education to fill the gap between the minimum budget for each district and the required local contribution. For West Bridgewater, Chapter Seventy Eight funds approximately twenty-five percent of the school budget, while the other seventy-five percent is funded by the town, school choice funds, grants and the revolving accounts. The Chapter Seventy funding formula has not changed since nineteen ninety-three. Now, if you look at that comparison to how education and our academic environment has changed, it's, it's just a very drastic inequality. And it's become woefully insufficient and inequitable way to fund our schools and our kids' needs. West Bridgewater has clearly been underfunded in Chapter Seventy for years, as shown by a comparison of the per-pupil expenditures. The per-pupil expenditure, just by definition, when I was learning more about this as well, I, I had asked Dr. Oakley, what is a per-pupil expenditure? So what that is, it's the total cost of the budget, all of the variables that go into making up a budget for a school district, and you divide that by the number of pupils. So our per-pupil expenditure is sixteen percent lower than the similar districts and eighteenth from the lowest in the state, which is at twelve thousand seven hundred and seventy-four dollars. So out of two hundred and ninety-nine, we rank, excuse me, two hundred and ninety-nine out of three hundred and seventeen districts as being the lowest, eighteenth. If I was trying to run that budget at home, I clearly wouldn't be able to meet either, so. So this chart here is the per-pupil expenditures based on enrollment, household income in a twenty-mile radius. As you can see, again, West Bridgewater is at the twelve thousand seven seven four mark, where we have HO, which is at twenty thousand per-pupil expenditure. I, I still struggle to try to understand that chart. It's, it's, it's very, it's obvious the, the underfunding that we're suffering from, and that's where we're, at this point in time, looking to the state to help us.
Well, and it shows that it's not just an urban problem, which I know that's what a lot that you'll hear about with this Promise Act and all that, that you have to help the cities, the cities, cities, but it goes much, much deeper than that. And it goes much deeper than that because we all have rising health insurance costs. We all have rising ELL costs. We all have rising out-of-district special education costs. And it doesn't just happen in the, in the urban centers. And West Bridgewater, for some reason, is only at, you know, a little below twenty percent of Chapter Seventy. And, you know, right next door, East Bridgewater, they have over fifty percent from Chapter Seventy. We're not that dissimilar, but that's, no one really understands this formula that was put out in nineteen ninety-three. But all those things have changed in twenty-five years.
The next chart is, again, a comparison for the Route Twenty-four corridor. And it includes other towns as well as, again, West Bridgewater is still at the very lowest end. And as Dr. Oakley just stated, we're not that different than East Bridgewater or Avon or Randolph. And Randolph's over seventeen thousand dollars per pupil expenditure. So, again, the inequality is just drastically obvious.
And again, I, I think people forget, because they think, "Oh, West Bridgewater, a nice little town," so they probably don't have problems with this. And you see that Brockton and Fall over there in the papers every day about this funding mechanism. And they need it, because they have a lot of things that they need, and they definitely need the funding. But when I looked at that and I saw that one of the major players was Brockton, that they were comparing to show how inequitable everything was, and when I saw what their per-pupil expenditure was, and then I looked at it, I said, "Whoa, we're less than Brockton." So people need to know that. This new formula needs to take into account all cities, towns, rural, suburban, and everybody. And we wanted to make it equitable. You can't just say, "We're going to throw more at the city." And I think that's one of the reasons we wanted to get this out to people in the community, because we need to let, let the legislators know, you need to make sure that we get the increased money that we deserve.
So Dr. Oakley had also kind of acquired some that, some figures in the fiscal year twenty proposed Chapter Seventy Eight in the governor's budget for West Bridgewater is four million forty thousand five hundred and twenty-one dollars, which is an increase of three hundred and forty-five thousand six hundred and twelve over fiscal year nineteen. And comparing that number, it's very close to the increase for the Special Education Department as well, because the Special Education, as Donna had mentioned, their increase is three hundred and twenty-one thousand four hundred and seventy-eight. So it's, it's just a factor that have, the increases compared to what we're increasing for the ELLs and for the Special Education, it's, it's still not enough. But we need the, we need to contact our local legislatures and urge them to support the Chapter Seventy increase in these budgets. The House and the Senate budgets are at four million... The House and the Senate budgets are at $4,583,306, which is an increase of $363,397 over fiscal year 19. So we're, again, just looking for the support, to support the recommendations of the foundation budget, the review, in the review commission. And that's, I think, what you just referred to as the Promise Act.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. Okay, so all that being said, we were tasked with, from the town, to come in level service. So, level service for us would be an increase of $686,388, which is a 5.46 increase, which the town appropriates $12,573,064. No?
That was FY19.
Oh, I'm sorry, FY19, I'm sorry.
FY20.
FY20, okay. The level service would give us an increase of $686,388, or a 5.6 increase. We knew that wasn't gonna go, so, oh, actually, we have the whole total, total budget. We actually add in $2,277,248 from our, our school choice grants and revolving accounts to give us a total school budget of $15,536,650. So out of that, $15 million, our special ed and out-of-district placements accounts for $321,478, or 2.4% of our increase, and the remainder of our budget would be a $364,910, which is a 3.06 increase. So you can see the special ed, you know, almost, just under 2.5% of our budget. So the school committee sat down, Dr. Oakley, and we came up with some revised budgets and cut out $120,800 from the proposed level service budget. Those adjustments came from a $65,000 cut from line 3230, Teaching Services, $35,800 cut from line 3413, Utilities, a $20,000 cut from line 3422, Maintenance, Maintenance of Buildings. So now, our revised budget for our, for our second time through here, number two, we've sent back to the town a budget of, well, actually presented to the FinCom and to the Board of Selectmen, a budget of $13,147,602, which is a proposed increase of, well, I'm gonna skip ahead again. Again, we have the revolving grants and account, revolving accounts and school choice and grants for $2,277,248, for a total school budget of $15,424,850. Of that, our proposed increase would be $574,538, which is an increase of 4.57% increase. And now, obviously, the special ed would increase because it's still, that number stays the same of $321,478, which is now a 2.55% increase, and the remainder of the budget, $244,060, is 2.02%. So we've just received back from the Selectmen that we do need to cut another $36,500 from the budget, so that we can get the budget passed. So the remaining $36,500 was cut, $20,000 more dollars cut from line 3230 for the Teaching Services, and $16,500 cut from line 3350, Student Body Activities. So now, that will give us, with the revolving grants, I'm sorry, the school choice revolving accounts and grants, a total budget submitted to the town of $15,388,350. Of that, it's a $538,38 increase, which is now 4.28%. And again, the special ed out of pla, out of district placements still stays the same at $321,478, which is now 2.56% of the increase. And the remainder of the school budget will only increase $216,560, which is 1.72%. So that's where we are, that's the budget we're going to go to town meeting on June 3rd with. Do we have any questions?
What does the, the cut from student activities and Teaching Services, what, what does that equate to, whether we can, is that the additional reading teachers?
Yeah, and also the advanced placement stipends.
And also the what?
I'm sorry. Advanced placement stipends.
Okay.
And we've cut a reading teacher at the Howard School. And then the secretary, the nurse, those things, were all part of the original cuts. I shouldn't say completely cut, the secretary and the nurse were reduced.
And the nurse, that position was because we lost that.
The grant.
So it's not like we're.
Health grant.
Right.
Right.
I mean, I just don't want it to look like we're cutting her time. That was because it was grant-based as well.
Yeah.
We didn't have that, so.
We got about $40,000 in the grant.
Yeah.
That, that we're not getting.
That's significant.
Right.
I mean, you think maybe Mr. Antonio can look for another card or raffle lot?
Well, there's, there's a tremendous amount of work that went into this, Dr. Oakley, him, the whole committee. I mean, obviously, we're not really where we wanna be, you know, financially, but we understand the, the town, you know, just can't fork over, you know, millions and millions of dollars for us, but I think the committee did a, a very good job led by Dr. Oakley and Mr. Michael Azic, and Mickey, of course, as well, putting this together and, you know, finding places to, to cut down as the best we could to send a budget that we think is responsible to the town, you know, for the school.
Yeah, so, so that will be the budget that you'll see at the town meeting on June 3rd. There's actually two other articles that, you know, are going to be on the town meeting. One of them is to get, we're asking for $150,000 in, in free cash to cover the cost of the unanticipated special ed costs that happened in FY19, from what Mrs. Hume was saying, the move-in, that monitor, the one-to-one, those unanticipated costs that came in after we passed our budget. So the Selectmen have put that forward, so that's an article. And then the second article is to see if the town will set up a Special Education Stabilization Fund, which other towns have recently set up. In 2016, a law came out allowing school departments and towns to do that. So we don't know exactly how we'll fund it yet, but we just wanna set up the account so that if, you know, you, you put so much money into that over the next five years and you get this big unexpected out-of-district placement or some unanticipated cost that you didn't expect, instead of having to take it from your budget that is already earmarked for something else, or have to go back to the town and vote at a town meeting, you would then just need a vote from the school committee and the Selectmen to get it out of this Special Education stabilization. And there are a lot of guidelines that come with that, and you, you can't make it bigger than 2% of your net school spending, so there's a lot of things, but I know East Bridgewater did vote it in last year, Norton voted it in, Cohasset, and there are a number of others. It just makes sense, because to have to go in front of an annual town meeting and have to explain these things every year, that can be tough, because it's not until June, you don't know if you're gonna get that, and a person moved in or needs these services in December, you know? So the town, the, the state understands that they don't give us enough money to place them, so that's why they're trying to find some ways for towns to be able to, to fund that. So it's not to put money in it this year, it's just to open it up, and then we can have a discussion with the town, with the Selectmen, and figure out what we're gonna put in.
And again, it's statutorily based, so it's not something that's discretionary between the school committee and Selectmen or anything like that. We have very strict requirements, so that's important.
So along with the budget, those two articles will be on for the school.
All right. Any other budget questions? Superintendent's evaluation.
Best time of the year. All right. Here's my presentation and my evidence and.
Why does this seem to get sicker with the year?
Because I've been here a long time.
Bless you.
Oh, goodness.
All right, so in here, I have given you my goals and the backup. I also gave you the rubric, the DESE rubric. For the superintendent, and if you look at the rubric, I highlighted the element that I was talking about, and then the evidence is written underneath on each page of the rubric. And then there, in those areas, it will say, "See sample, see sample, see sample." And all these other pages that are in here are the samples. So I know that you will enjoy reading all this, because it's the favorite time of the year for every school committee to do the superintendent's evaluation. And if you have any questions, or if you need more information, because you don't understand something, or you wanna see more evidence of certain things, please just hunk him, come in, email me, whatever, and I can get you whatever documentation you need. Because there are some things that I just wrote a narrative, but if you wanna see more evidence, let me know.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Kim, do we have a form that we're filling out as well?
I can hand the email back to you. You guys have to get together to meet, so you have to schedule a meeting date.
Yeah, I know, but we usually, that, that's just to kinda go over everything at, at the end. We need to do Dr. Oakley's evaluation, we need to.
The template.
Yeah.
Sure.
The template, yeah, we need, yeah, we need the template. All right, and then I guess we do need to make a, a time here to discuss, Dr. Oakley, before the June 3rd meeting.
We don't have much time.
No, we don't have much time at all. Do we wanna, well, next week's gonna be pretty much busy, we'll be busy a lot next week with graduation and awards nights and things. How about, does the 28th or 29th of May work for anybody?
I think the 28th is when they have the.
That's the athletic night, that's right, yeah. The 29th, we have DARE graduation as well, but that's during the day. So could it be Wednesday or even Thursday?
I could do either of those, Wednesday or Thursday.
I can do Thursday.
Thursday's better, huh?
Thursday.
Thursday, Thursday, Jim?
29th.
30th.
30th.
Yeah.
What time?
Sure.
Uh, 6 o'clock early, isn't, you can do it, I mean, flexible on time, so what about everybody's time lines?
Doesn't matter to me, when I was comfortable for everybody.
Six?
Six, okay.
Great time.
At Spring Street School?
And where?
Spring Street.
Spring Street.
When do you want the evaluation returned to you?
Uh, we don't have much time on this, because we, we're usually doing this because we have a short.
We usually have like a couple of weeks between every.
You know why the, the, the meeting got moved up in June?
The town meeting.
Because of the town meeting. We usually are a week later.
So do you want these back tomorrow?
From this after September?
We have time on the 30th.
Uh, yeah, we gotta get this. Yeah, so we gotta, so if we can get the, if we, if we get the paperwork from Kim tomorrow, can we, can we get these back, say, by Thursday or Friday next week, '23, '24? And then there'll be the weekend to compile them and get them to Kim, uh, early on, like the, I can get them to Kim by the 28th, so we can get them all reconciled together, or actually, Kim can get them to me, so I can reconcile them, and then we could have something ready for June 3rd.
By the 23rd, you said, correct?
Yeah, so if we get them, if we can get them back, if we get everything by tomorrow, then we get them back by the 23rd? That works? By that weekend?
Perfect.
Okay.
And we email them to Kim?
Yeah, you can email them to Kim, and then I get them to Kim. Or handwrite them, whatever you wanna do.
I was gonna say.
Handwrite them.
Okay.
You'll send out the paperwork tomorrow?
Yep, and then I'll put, I'll put one main sheet together with everybody's comments, and we'll, we'll try to get through as soon as we can, because we'll have Mr. Antonio here, and we have the town meeting, and whatever else pops up after graduation.
Evaluation.
Yeah, real evaluation stuff. So, so we do meet earlier that day. Okay. That's fun. All right, MSBA vote, Dr. Oakley.
Um, this is just, our town attorney, David Gay, would like us to use this language just to ensure that I have voting, or I can sign, you, you voted me in to sign off on everything for the Howard School roof. I, I, we have to sign the PFA for the Howard School roof, it's due by May 24th to the MSBA, and both myself and David Gagny, he has to get a vote by the Selectmen, I have to have a vote by the school committee, that we can move ahead with the construction and all that stuff for the Howard School roof. So it's just a matter of language that the MSBA wants to see, that we will vote it in.
Okay, so the motion will be the, we're gonna vote to authorize the superintendent of schools to sign all documents related to MSBA projects and to ratify any previously assigned documents for the Howard School gym roof project.
Moved. Second?
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Inclusion Matters update, Mrs. Hume.
Yes, I have an update from Melissa Winchell, President of Inclusion Matters, our Special Ed Parent Advisory Council. First update is our literacy workshop on April 25th, featured Dr. Adam Hulinski, Professor of Literacy at Bridgewater State University, and a handful of his students. Parents visited centers and made take-home literacy activities to use at home with their children. The workshop was one of our most interactive yet. The four-week yoga series is ongoing, the class is packed with kids with and without disabilities, and meets Saturdays at the West Bridgewater Library. The next Inclusion Matters meeting is this Wednesday, May 15th, at 6 o'clock, right here in the Learning Commons. The topic of the night will be, "Who Lives Like This: Life as a Family with Special Needs." A West Bridgewater parent and special education mom extraordinaire will share what she knows about surviving and thriving in a family with special needs. She'll talk about how we can partner with other families to keep our sanity and receive the support we need. Lastly, May is fundraising month for Inclusion Matters. We are currently hosting two raffles, one for the WBHS seniors for preferred seating at graduation, and the other for tickets to summertime family activities. The month will conclude with a night out at the West Bridgewater Barretts on Tuesday, May 21st. And for more information about any of these fundraisers, please visit the Inclusion Matters Facebook page.
Thank you, Mrs. Hume. NRC Collaborative Agreement, Dr. Oakley.
So Holbrook has been voted in, or they asked to come into the North River Collaborative. They have been voted in by the Board of the North River Collaborative, but we also need a majority of the school committees to vote to the changes of the collaborative agreement, which would now include Holbrook as a member of the North River Collaborative. So it's just a vote, not to include them, but to include, include the language changes with them in it. Over.
And that's supported by the Board of Directors?
We voted them in, yes.
Okay, so we're gonna vote to approve the amended changes to the collaborative agreement as presented above and proposed in the consolation with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
Moved. Second?
All in favor.
Aye.
How many schools are involved now with North River, do you know?
Yep, so now it would be, it was eight, now it's nine.
Okay, approval of policies is non-public forum.
Hold on one second. Can we just do the warrants?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That wasn't on the agenda.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mrs. Sullivan. Warrants.
Need to talk every time I get... All right, so, this is for the bill and payroll warrants, numbers 41 through 45. So, the following warrants were issued and paid, specifically the bill warrants dated April 18th, 2019, in the amount of $61,379.27. Bill warrants dated April 25th, 2019, in the amount of $18,662.60. A bill warrant dated May 2nd, 2019, in the amount of $82,761.13. A bill warrant dated May 9th, 2019, in the amount of $57,412.55. And then the last bill warrant that was approved or issued and paid was dated May 16th, 2019, in the amount of $38,699.82. There were three payroll warrants, one dated April 20th, 2019, in the amount of $478,291.16. A payroll warrant dated May 2nd, 2019, in the amount of $453,368. And then the last payroll warrant dated May 16th, 2019, in the amount of $612,950.50. And as always, all warrants are public record, and once they are signed, they are available in the Selectmen's office for review.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Public forum. Members of the audience wishing to address the committee may do so at this time. Audience members are reminded that personnel issues or issues that would violate student or employee confidentiality cannot be addressed at the public forum. Note takers?
Yeah, I'd just like the public to know that there is a rally at the Massachusetts...
Could you come up?
Sure.
State your name and...
Yes, I'm Melissa Winchell, a parent of a kid in West Bridgewater Schools. I just, pertaining to the budget conversation that you had, there is a rally being held at the Massachusetts State House on Thursday from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. A lot of public school organizations are involved, including the MTA, the union for the State of... Teachers Union for the State of Massachusetts. And again, just asking again and again, trying to draw our representatives and governors and senators' attention to the recommendations of the FBRC, and trying to make sure that they do fully fund the budget and, you know, reexamine the Chapter 70 formula. So, just want the public to be aware of it, because the more people who show up to these things, the better off we are. So, if, you know, the very least, we can make phone calls, we should all have our representatives and senators' phone numbers in our phones. If you don't, you're not a real public educator. And if you can, you should make it to the rally, because there's going to be a lot of people there. I know Bridgewater State is sending a bus, at least one bus full of concerned students and faculty, so I hope you'll join us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, our announcements. Okay, district-wide, school council meetings. The Howard School, May 13th, 2:45 p.m., today. Spring Street School, May 15th at 2:45. The PTO, May 28th, 7:00 p.m. at the Howard School. Boost-a-thon, May 22nd, fun run for the Spring Street School, Roselle McDonald and Howard, PTO-sponsored. Inclusion Matters, May 15th, 6:00 p.m. at the Middle Senior High School Learning Commons. At the Middle Senior High School, on May 16th, Past Meets Present Concert at 6:15 in the auditorium. May 16th and 17th, the Middle School MCAS, Math MCAS. May 21 and 22, Grade 8 Science MCAS and Grade 10 Math MCAS. May 22nd, Senior Awards Night at 5:30. May 24th, Graduation, 6:00 p.m. at the Town Park. May 28th, Athletic Awards Night, 6:00 p.m. at the Howard School. May 14th, Reading is Fundamental. May 16th, the Art Show is at 5:30. May 17th, Grade 4 Field Trip to Roger Williams Zoo. May 21st, Parent Volunteer Breakfast at 8:30 a.m. May 23rd, Little Leo's Dinner at 6:00 p.m. May 29th is the Dare Graduation at 1:00 p.m. May 30th is the Spring Concert. May 31st, Grade 6 Visits the Middle Senior High School at 8:00 a.m. May 31st, the Brockton Rocks Howard Night at 6:30. Roselle McDonald School, May 14 and 15, Math MCAS. May 16th, Grade 1 Museum of Science Field Trip, Dig into Dinosaurs, PTO-sponsored. May 28th, Grade 3 Howard School Transition Tour, 9:00 to 10:30 a.m. June 3rd, Grade 1 Field Day, 9:00 to 11:15. The rain date is June 4th. At the Spring Street School, May 29th, Kindergarten to Visit the Roselle McDonald School from 9:15 to 10:30. May 30th and 31st, Pre-K End of the Year Celebration, Mrs. Matos's class. Our next regularly scheduled school committee meeting will be Monday, June 3rd, at a time change of 6:00 p.m. at the Middle Senior High School Learning Commons. And now, I'd like to... We're going to move into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to the collective bargaining agreement, and not to reconvene in open session. This would call for a roll call vote.
Aye.
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 We're good to go. Thank you very much.
Thank you.